Meeting. Okay, wait a minute. Thank you. I'd like to welcome you to the Woodbury zoning board of appeals meeting. Please rise for a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Republic.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
And liberty and justice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll have to teach me how to do that, Kelly. You're on mute.
That was all Craig. I he teed that one up for me.
Well, I had the picture, but I didn't manage to get it on there. Alrighty. Let's get down to business here. Okay, this is the Woodbury zoning board appeals meeting. We meet the second Wednesday of every month. Let me introduce the board members. I'm going to go in order of my screen. I don't know what your screen looks like. So we have Mr. Craig Brady. We have Mr. Edward de Jesus. We have Ms. Rachel Bruce. We have Mr. Andrew Zumas and myself, Karen Unger. We have our recording secretary, Jessica McLennan, and our attorney for this evening is Kelly Norton. All right. Our next meeting will be in August, August 10. I don't know if it will be a Zoom meeting or if it will be in person. We'll have to see what the governor decides. Okay, let's start with the agenda. We have no executive session. Has everyone read the minutes from June 8?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'm making.
Thank you. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. All right, new business? We have none. We have action, one decision. We have to render a decision on, act on the decision. Okay, this is the aponte. It's to review a decision requesting a variance for the construction of a six-foot fence in the side yard. Whereas pursuant to section 146-5B, no fence shall be more than four feet in height in any side yard. Said property is located in the R2A zoning district at 10 Sequoia Trail in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 247, block 3, lot 9. And we have a draft decision here. Couple of pages of facts and findings and the decision is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussions, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested area variance described and discussed above, to the extent noted above, and hereby finds that the variance as granted is the minimum variance necessary to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. Per section 8316-9 of the village code, this decision shall expire if a building permit is not obtained by the applicant within 180 days from the date of this decision. The board may extend the time for one additional period of 90 days if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. Do I have a motion to vote on this draft decision? Rachel, okay, do I have a second? Okay, thank you. Okay, let me go here. Greg, how do you vote?
Hi.
Rachel? Edward.
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Screen keeps changing on me. Sorry. And I vote I. So Mr. Aponte will get his sentence. All right. Next on the agenda, we have public hearings. I'd like to say I'm changing the order here. So if anyone is here for the Dunkin' Donuts South Side. I'll need to read that first. This is South Side Oil Dunkin' Donuts continuation of public hearing requesting an interpretation of sections 310-2 and 310-7, and whether adding a drive-in, drive-through to the existing Dunkin' Donuts is permitted. Said property is located in the LC zoning district at 12432 in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 226, block 1, lot 80. We did receive a letter from the applicant and an email on July 12th, which was yesterday, and the attorney, Mr. John, first requested an adjournment until next month because they were unable to gather the information they needed to possibly rebut what we had to say.
I'll make a motion to adjourn it to next, the next meeting that we have.
Okay, do I have a second? Craig, okay, all in favor of adjourned that meeting until August, assuming that's the next meeting? All in favor? I, okay.
Just so anybody from the public knows, that's August 10.
Yes. I had to look at my dates there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, first on the agenda is Coughlin. Request variance extension for the construction of a solid six-foot fence in the front yard. Said property is located in the R1A zoning district at 1 Snidane in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 221, block 3, lot 8. Is the applicant present? Oh, I see. Yes, Mr. Coughlin is there. So, Mr. Coughlin, you were ordered, you were ordered, you were issued a build variance, wow, to move your current fence on your corner lot 17 feet closer to the road in order to gain more visible, more viable yard space. Variance lapsed in March 2022. And you did not, because you did not apply for a building permit. And you said that is difficulty due to finding contractors during COVID. And then the winter came and it was, the ground was difficult to, you know, to put a fence in. In May of this year, you were finally able to find a contractor. You signed a contract. And the new fencing material was delivered. But when you went to the building department to get the building permit, because the variance had lapsed, they told you you needed to appear before us for an extension. Is that correct so far? Mr. Coughlin?
He's on mute. On mute, yeah. But that does adequately represent the letter that he wrote for his extension.
Okay.
Can you hear me now, ma'am?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I have a little technical problem.
I understand totally. Do you have anything to add to what your letter said or what I said?
No, ma'am, I think the letter explains it, explains it all. I mean, to be completely honest with you, I honestly did not recognize that that the variance was only good for 180 days initially. But the other aspect that I think somebody should consider is that if you're going to do the work yourself, then I could have applied for a building permit at any time. But when you're hiring a contractor, I can't apply for a building permit until I do so, right? Because all of his information has to be on that permit. So, you know, it's one of the catch-22s, I think, with the 180 days that should be considered as well.
Duly noted. Does the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Coughlin?
Will you?
Andrew, go ahead.
I don't, I don't understand what you're trying to say, Mr. Coughlin, by that. So you got the variance and then?
Yes, sir, but I was unable to find a contractor that was either able to do the work in a reasonable timeframe. The cost, I mean, I had a guy offered to do it for $12,000, which I'm moving 55 feet and 17 feet. So I didn't want to do that. And obviously neither did he. But my point, if I was going to move it myself, I could have applied for the building permit at any time because it would have been my insurance information and everything else that would have been on the application. But if I can't find a contractor, then I can't really make the 180 days because I can't apply for a, unless I'm wrong, I can't apply for the building permit because I can't fill out the application because it has to have the contractor's information. Is that not correct?
Well, yeah, but I mean, yes, but one is not mutually exclusive of the other. But that's, I misunderstood what you were saying. So you needed the contractor to fill out their information for the building permit. And you thought maybe that the 180 days was not enough to get that done? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, well, it wouldn't have mattered. I'll admit straight up, I didn't realize that it was only good for 180 days. But, but even if I had, yeah, I would have not been able to get it done in that time because I could not find a contractor that was willing and able to do the work.
Right. And what we do is, you know, exactly what you just said, right? You got the variance. You weren't able to find anybody within those 180 days. You'd go to the building department and request an extension. And that's how the process works. But, you know, you didn't know the process.
I know it now for sure.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any comments?
Kelly, can you please describe what our ability is here? Please, what, within our jurisdiction, what are we actually allowed to do?
So what the code says is that the the variance is good for 180 days from the date of the decision. And he says he didn't have to go to the planning board. It's the date of your decision. And then it permits you to grant a one additional extension period for 90 days. So the issue here is that his variance actually expired. It lapsed in March. And he didn't make a request for an extension until June. So you're allowed to grant a one-time extension for one additional period of 90 days. So if you granted it from your March meeting, from your March expiration, that would have actually brought it until June, which is when he requested the extension. So it depends on how the board is reading those provisions. If it's going to be a retroactive extension, again, that only brings it till June and he has to come back before you anyway. I'm not quite sure how this one was noticed, Karen. I'm just trying to pull up the agenda again. So if this was actually handled as a public hearing, you could consider this as a public hearing for that variance again, for the sign variance, see if anybody has any comments. And then you could issue a decision at your next meeting. But an additional 90 days from the June date from when it was actually requested was
Would be October.
Yeah, was the October date. So you've got a couple of options depending on how this board reads that provision. And I say that because you would be interpreting that provision.
Well, there is no wording that says when it begins. And I would assume it begins.
When it ends.
Oh, really?
Oh, I thought that's what you were going to say, either when it ends or when it's requested. But technically, if you're, if you requested it, like, if he requested it next year, would you be granting him one additional extension, not, not him, but anybody? Would you be granting that person one additional extension? But basically, the variance was valid for two years or what, I mean, you have to look at it at that instance too, because what you do will carry precedent in that regard.
So basically, you're saying it's up to us when this, when this extension starts, either today, if we're going to cycle back in?
Well.
Well, you would be interpreting that provision. But I could, I think I've explained how I think that it reads. Because what, again, what you have to do is you have to see how that would apply to everybody else. You can't just limit it to this one application.
Right, so.
Got it.
If, if, like, like Kelly just said, if we were to grant any variance for anybody ever, and they came back a year after not doing anything, and said, I didn't know, I would like another 90 days from now. Well, this, this decision to do that could set precedent.
Yeah.
For future decisions. So.
Understood.
I think that's very important for us to keep in mind.
But there is a somewhat simple solution for this application in this regard, and that is it's listed as a public hearing. So it wouldn't give the, they wouldn't have to come back for another public hearing and then wait another two months, basically, for you to act. Because it's listed as a public hearing and assuming that the notices did go out properly, you would be able to hear from the public regarding the fence request, see if there's any new comments. And then at your next meeting, you would be able to reissue your decision if you so choose. But that just means that he would not be able to install any fence until August 11.
So I think it's very important that we explain. Mr. Coughlin, do you understand what counsel has described? Oh, I'm sorry, Rachel, you had your hand up. I apologize.
Oh, no, it's all right. No, I decided I didn't want to interrupt. I just wanted to ask, I don't want to interrupt. I know you're about to ask Mr. Coughlin a question. I just wanted to see if you'd be just given the fact that it is true, some time has passed between March and now, just if you'd be able to just give us some insight on why he's coming to us in June, now July, as opposed to when it initially was going to lapse in March, because that might be a better enlightened our, our decision.
Rachel, he came in June of this year to the building department for a building permit. But the variance had already lapsed. He was unaware of that. So he asked to be put on the agenda for last month, but the day he came to the building department was the day of the meeting. So that's why he's on the agenda for this evening.
Okay, no, I, I understand. No, thank you. I, so I was, I was just wanting to know essentially why it took so long to go from here between March and June to come to.
Didn't know, that's why.
Didn't know, that's why. Okay, that's all I want to know. I apologize. Thank you.
That's right.
Sir, to answer your question earlier, I do, but I guess when I read that, you know, if I, it expired in March and I was, and you could give another 90 days, I read that as that takes me into June. You with me? So that, you know, I started this process. I think the first day I was in the building department was the 5th of June is when I submitted the application. But was not aware, even at that time, that it was that the variance had expired. So it took some time for them to notify me of that as well. In fact, I went back to the building department. They couldn't find my, my request initially. So.
Coughlin, you're right. We, if we were, let's say hypothetically, to take into account the 90-day extension, April, May, June, we could grant you that extension through June 30. But do you think that that would be enough time for you to complete what you need to complete? It's, it's July 13. No, April, May, June. No, so that's the end of June.
When you say complete, sir, what do you mean?
Well, no, you actually, you're out of time, right? Because if we, if we grant it, let's say a hypothetical 90-day extension, April, May, by June 30, you would have had to apply for the, for the permit.
Sir, I applied for that permit in June, long before. They couldn't grant it for me because he, he couldn't make the decision. That's why I submitted that. In fact, I initially submitted an email, but he sent to, I believe, to one of the town attorneys. And then subsequently, I was informed that I needed to prepare a letter, which I did, which I understand happened to be the last time you guys met, but.
That was actually me. So he emailed me and asked me if the variance was still in place. And when it was issued, and I said it was issued on September 8. And then it would have lapsed on the 180 days after that, which was in March. And then even if a 90-day extension is granted, that would have brought it to June. And that's, I said, you know, get a letter in, that's the best I can say. And so a letter was provided, and it was provided on the day of your last meeting. But I just want to go back to one thing. I'm looking at the decision and I'm trying to remember which board members were present. So it was Karen, it was Craig, and it was Andrew. Okay, so Rachel and Ed were new. We're not on the board. Okay. So it sounds, and please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that the board agrees that if you, even if you granted an extension to this, it doesn't assist the applicant because it would have brought it to June and we're already in July. And you don't want to set a precedent of having somebody do this. And then two years goes by and then they ask for a 90-day extension. Is that accurate?
I.
Accurate, yes.
I agree with that, but I think we have given
90-day extensions.
I'm, I'm not sure. There, there haven't, there's only been one request since I've been conflict counsel and then counsel that I've been present for. And I believe that one was timely. And then somebody asked for a second one, and that one, obviously, you can't do under your code. So I don't know what you've done in the past.
So the most, the most recent similar situation was the variances that were needed for that lot off of Smith Globe Road. Right, but that ended up being a new application, as I recall, because it had gone almost a year or more than a year. So it was a new application that went in. And I believe potentially the fees were waived in that instance. And it was a quick decision because there were no changes, but it, it still was a new application.
So Kelly, can you finish your thought? You were saying it seems like the, the board wants to do this. So.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, that everybody was comfortable with that statement first. And then, second, if you wanted to treat this, since it is listed as a public hearing, and again, I'm assuming that the public hearing notices went out. And I actually, the last time this was before you, I don't think you actually had any members of the public turn up for this one.
We did. We did.
You did?
We had one of his neighbors. It was an in-person meeting at Village Hall, and we had.
Mr. Dunn?
Sebold, right. Don Sebold came.
Oh, yes. He said he thinks this request is very reasonable, considering it's a corner lot, the house is great looking, and this will help the aesthetics, and it is very reasonable to approve it. Those are my notes. Sorry. I, I wouldn't have even looked for that if you didn't say that.
Good note.
Thanks.
Yeah.
It's coming back to me now. There are so few in-person meetings lately.
Yeah.
So just doing that, if you want, you can treat this as the public hearing for the fence. And then if you would like the, to see the prior decision, to see if you, anything has changed, if the board feels comfortable with it, or if you would like me to read it to you, I can certainly do that as well. And you can consider that.
It was provided in our package.
Yeah, I don't.
Oh.
So what you're saying, Kelly, is we would be treating this as.
As a new application.
Today.
Yep.
With the decision that you rendered then.
Yep.
That we could vote on today.
Yep.
So Mr. Coughlin could get a fresh variance today.
Yes, although it almost never happens like that, which is why I just thought of it, going through it, because this property actually doesn't trigger a 239 referral. So that actually saves you there. This is a fence, so it's a type 2 action. And since it was noticed as a public hearing.
And I believe that's what we did with that property on Smith Globe Road too, because I remember looking at it and thinking, why are we? You know, in other words, you're not supposed to rehear, well, a negative decision, unless there's been a change.
You can rehear if it's a unanimous vote.
So I think I'll speak just for myself, that it would be a good thing for us to open up the public comment to see if there is any public comment, and then close the public comment and move forward with the recommendation that counsel made. So I'll make that motion.
So, but first, don't we have to have a unanimous vote to rehear it?
Do we?
Why don't, why don't we take it one step at a time? So the request was for a, an extension. So at this point, I think it's the unanimous position not to grant an extension because it doesn't assist the applicant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It would only get them till.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
If that's correct, then I think there can be a motion to deny the extension request.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to deny the extension request.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Now do we have a motion?
To rehear the application?
Right.
I'll make the motion.
Rachel makes it. Seconds it. Does anybody need any details on the decision that was made?
For with, we need to vote on, we need to vote on rehearing, right?
We just did, didn't we?
That, that was the motion.
Motion and second.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't we? I'm running ahead. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Oh, unanimous? Then that's awesome. Love that.
Does anyone have any questions concerning the original decision? It was pretty straightforward. I mean, he's got a corner property. And he just wanted to move the fence closer to the street, which was nowhere near the, right away from the, you know, the road right away or whatever. And it gave him, it will give him more of a backyard.
I just wanted to.
Put your hand up. Whoops.
I'm sorry to say Craig or, sorry.
Oh.
No, go ahead.
Sure, sure. No, I was just going to say, just speaking on my, behalf of myself and Ed as well, I believe that we may, I have to check through my records to make sure I actually have the original supporting documentation, which also you have up right here. But if not, just to get a hard copy of that at some point would be awesome.
Yeah, I can definitely send it to you. Pretty much this was, this was where, this is where the fence is. And he wanted to move it to here. And Mr. Coughlin, let me know if I'm misrepresenting anything.
No, that's.
This is where it is from the pool. So it would give greater separation there. But this is steeper than it looks. I know there was talking about that with the board. This is one view. And then another view. So the yellow line is where the fence would be.
Got it.
And Rachel, you have the decision?
Yes.
And the, and the plan for tonight is to act on that decision, on that decision that you have in front of you? So the plan for tonight will not require any documentation after tonight. So make sure that you are comfortable with what you have in front of you or ask any questions that you need. Because the plan is to vote on that specific decision.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I think it might be helpful if you, you saw this. That's why I was trying to find it to pull it up.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you bringing it up. Thank you. I just like to have all the information before, you know.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, no. And if you hadn't seen this, I mean, the picture actually is worth a thousand words in this instance. And where's, I think this is the other one that is what people would see when they're driving by. So. Anyway, so you do have.
Mr. Brady actually was kind enough to remind us that the fence is actually going to be lower. Or, or it's going to, it's going to be lower to the street than, than, than what the street is.
Yeah.
It's, it's not going to be.
Correct.
Any obstruction. There's not going to be anything like that, Rachel.
Okay. Okay.
I'm glad you remembered that, Andrew. I didn't.
It was my only face-to-face meeting ever.
See, it's all coming back now. There's been so few.
Don't you love it when flashbacks happen?
I got all dressed up. I put cologne on. It was crazy.
We remember.
Um, so if you'd like, you can open the public hearing and see if there are any comments from the public.
I make a motion open to public hearing.
A second.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this application?
Really, just Mr. Coughlin?
So.
Do you have any comments on this application?
No. Other than I have, the, the new fence sitting in my backyard, no.
Yeah, all the materials have been delivered because he thought he was going to start his construction.
So I'll make a motion to close the public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. And do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to direct counsel to reissue the, do you have to, we have to reissue it or no?
No, you can adopt it, actually. It's the same.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we adopt the previous decision in total.
And I'll, and I'll just drop a footnote as, like, with a little procedural history.
Okay.
So we don't have to review that decision because we all have it, correct?
You all have it, but just so Mr. Coughlin knows, it is the same decision again with a footnote that will be added, just describing where we are. But there is the same 180-day period.
Oh, I got that loud and clear. So.
I was second, Mr. Brady's motion.
Okay, let's take a vote. How do you vote, Ed? You for that?
I.
I. Rachel?
I.
Andrew?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
And I vote I. So.
This almost never happens. So I hope.
No, I don't think it's ever happened since I've been on the board. So.
Thank goodness it was noticed as a public hearing.
Yeah.
So Kelly, he can start, he can apply tomorrow for the building permit and start construction. But he has 180 days from tonight. But he has a hundred eighty days from tonight, correct?
To get, to get the building permit.
Right, to get the building permit. Do you understand?
I have a feeling he'll be there bright and early tomorrow. The application is already, it's been submitted. It's just sitting waiting to be approved.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will contact them again tomorrow.
Alright.
So Mister Coughlin, you understand what happened here tonight, right?
Sort of, sort of, yeah.
So you have a new variance that's gonna be effective tomorrow. Your, your request, your initial request for an extension was denied. You have a new request that was approved based on the previous decision. So tomorrow, if you go and put in your building permit, you're gonna have a hundred eighty days from tomorrow to submit that building permit and get that work started.
Got it. Alright, sir. Well, folks, I appreciate your time and your understanding. And I promise if I, if I put in any more variants, I'll know. Are all variants good for a hundred and eighty days?
Yes.
Yes, unless you also need planning board approval.
Right, whichever is.
Yeah.
And we are only authorized to approve one extension for ninety days.
Got it. Okay, folks, again, I appreciate your time.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Alrighty. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Mira, public hearing requesting a variance for the construction of a ten-foot by eighteen-foot storage shed in the side yard, whereas pursuant section three ten dash seven properties in the R two A district are required. Have a minimum setback of thirty feet. Said property is located in the R two A zoning district at Six College Drive in Highland Mills and is known on the village of Woodbury tax maps as section two four five, block two, lot eight. And I see Mister Mara has been very patiently waiting.
No problem. Hello, everyone.
Hello, Mister Mara. So you're requesting relief basically from the the code that says that you can only have a shed in the rear yard. However, your rear yard slopes downward.
Yes.
And you have a fence around that rear yard with a very large German shepherd, I believe it is.
Yes.
Running around back there. Okay, I, I saw it. So I said, I'll just look from the street.
Yes.
So you proposed a side yard shed because there's, except for the front of the property, which would be not very feasible.
Yes.
You know. So it would only leave like six to eight feet from that property line. Your neighbor has.
Has a shed now, my neighbor has a shed nearby within seven feet of away from my fence.
Yeah.
And he's, it's located in the back of the house.
Right, right.
Which was leveled out by the developer. When we bought a house, it wasn't, our backyard wasn't leveled as my neighbors. Otherwise, I would have an option to.
To put the shed in the rear yard.
To, located in the, in the, in the rear back of the house.
Yeah. I don't believe the neighbor came before us for variance. Alright. You said that the shed is going to match the house with the.
Siding, yeah, color and everything, yes.
You do have a beautiful piece of property, I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, comments for Mister Mara? Now, we cannot render a decision this evening or will we be able to, Kelly, because of the five hundred? No. Yeah, you are, go ahead.
I was just gonna explain to Mister Mara that the application needs to be referred to the Orange County Planning Department. And the Orange County Planning Department will weigh in as to whether or not there's any intermunicipal or countywide impacts from the variance. I know it's very unlikely, but it's part of the law that it needs to be required, it needs to be referred. And the matter has been referred to the county, but they have thirty days to respond. So this board is unable to take any action until either those thirty days pass or they receive a report back, whichever is first. So usually it takes between, you know, they'll get at some point later this month that they would be able to act in August. But they're unable to act this evening. That's part of the reason I was saying that the last applicant was so lucky. It's because he didn't fall within that area that needs to be referred.
I believe also, do you need permission from the HOA? They used to, do you need permission to this? Is there anything in their bylaws? I know we had a copy of those ones.
I do not have any idea, to be honest.
I don't know if they need approval for that.
No.
I don't think that's any of our concern.
No, but I was just wondering.
I will, I will ask.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments or questions? I would say I make a motion to open it to the public, but I will, just in case somebody's in the background there.
There, you take it in.
Alright, is there anyone from the public who wishes to come on and address this application, to speak to this application?
Kelly, you're muted.
Sorry, the only people here are myself and Jess, so. Nobody's in the waiting room right now.
Nobody's in the waiting room, okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing, public comment.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, what that means, Mister Mara, is that at the end of this meeting, we will discuss your application. But we can't render a decision. Are we gonna discuss it tonight or are we gonna wait?
So Kelly, can't we make a motion hypothetically, if we were all to agree? Couldn't we make a motion for county to draw up a decision in line with our conversation this evening, pending clearance from the county or no response from the county? Couldn't we do that?
So you can't vote on that? What you can do is you can authorize the drafting of a decision, certainly. But you just can't act on the decision conditioned upon the county. So that's why you have to wait, otherwise you you just don't have jurisdiction until they act. So any such motion would be null and void, you, but you could authorize the drafting of a decision. You can certainly discuss the action tonight.
Right, so we can discuss it, we can authorize the council to prepare if that's what we decide.
Yep.
Next, next month, one way or the other, either we get a response or we.
You'll be able to act.
Will be able to act next month on your proposal, which you will present next month.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mister Mister Mara, do you understand?
So I'm, I'm, I think I understood.
Basically, we don't have the authority to make a decision because we have not received the approval from Orange County that we have the authority to do that. But what we, what we're gonna do tonight is we're gonna discuss this case, this situation. And yes, that's, we would make a, we would direct counsel to make a decision consistent with our conversation. And then next month, or the next meeting, we would act on that decision. We would vote on that decision. And you would find out next month where you were at with that decision.
Okay. And the, the, the response from the county, the county will be, can be n- nothing at all, no response, or within the thirty-day period.
Right, and it'll lead to say local determination, which means it's up to the, to us. Or they'll have some footnotes or whatever as to why they say it's not recommended. But I doubt that very much is going to happen.
I think you're gonna get a local determination. It's just that you haven't gotten it back.
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
And local determination, Mister Mara, that's what you want?
Yes.
But I, I think that that's what it's gonna be. The board just doesn't have it, so the board just can't take action tonight. But they can discuss your application, go through the five-part balancing test and authorize the drafting of a decision consistent with whatever those discussions are.
And, and the end of this meeting, Mister Mary, you're welcome to stay and listen to what we have to say. Or you can call the building department tomorrow and find out what the decision is.
Isn't that.
Okay.
Or what the draft decision is. I'm sorry, Andrew, what?
Isn't that the last thing, Madam Chair, on our agenda for tonight?
Yes.
So Mister Mara, basically, after this, we're gonna deliberate your case.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okie doke.
No problem.
Alright.
So everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, thank you.
Take care. Good luck.
Bye.
Okay, so we have nothing else on the agenda, so we will be discussing Mister Mara's shed.
Mister Brady has a question.
Yep, Craig has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Craig, I didn't see you there.
So before, before we go into deliberation, or we can defer this until after the deliberation. So let's do that. I have something I'd like to discuss after the deliberation.
Okay.
Keep us on track.
We will not adjourn. Until.
Right.
For lunch or, or public?
Public.
Okay. Okay.
Nothing serious. It, it basically has to do with two thirty-nine.
Oh, okay, you got, you got, you got me a little scared there. I was like, wait.
No, nothing to be scared about. It, it's, I, I have a, I have a a bug up my burr about two thirty-nine, so let's just leave it at that.
Got it. Okay.
Alright, so Mister Mara has a piece of property that's level in the front, sloped downward in the back. He has a wrought iron fence around the back portion that's sloped downhill. He's got some beautiful trees planted along the fence. His house is very well maintained, the lawn, driveway's quite wide. And so he plans to put that shed next to the driveway, which would bring it probably as close as the neighbor's shed is to his fence, you know, six to eight feet from the property line. There is nothing. If he does get the shed, there's nothing there to separate where the property line is. You really, there's nothing, there's no trees, there's no fence, there's no rock wall, there's nothing to delineate where that property line is. But you can see from the neighbor has it in the backyard, it's very close to his fence. His would be in the side yard, very close to the property line. And he said it's going to match the house in color and siding roof, hold that he's, he will, I believe, be attached. A, a picture, a diagram. Somewhere I saw it. Comments, please?
Do, let's do the five parts.
Okay. That sounds, oh yeah, he did. He has all the shed specifications. Okay. Let's look at those five questions. Okay, question one, will the granting of this variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or create a detriment to nearby properties? He says, no. I do not believe it will become, it will, because a few other neighbors, maybe more than a few, have storage sheds on their properties and ours will match the house's exterior facade with just vinyl sliding type and color. I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Agreed.
Andrew?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can the benefit, number two, can the benefit you seek be achieved by some other feasible method other than variance? He says, no, because our backyard is not level. And for the storage shed to be located somewhere else on our property, it would be a far more complex project, in my opinion. I agree.
There's, there's no way other than a variance, he could put a shed on his property.
Yeah, like I don't, I don't wanna be in, I know that there are way, it would obviously be more involved, but he can technically, there's a way to pour concrete. It's sort of like a level.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yes, but yeah. And he says, you know, it just would be a far more complex project. That's.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else comment on that? Okay.
I, I agree. I think there are ways to do it, but they would be significantly involved. And since no one from the public, if it was noticed properly, complained. Silence gives consent.
Okay. Number three, how substantial is the variance that you were requesting? He says, it's not a very substantial variance, in my opinion, considering this is a normal type and style storage shed, which I've seen at other neighbors' properties in our community and throughout the town. Well, the shed may not be substantial, but I think the, the location and setbacks and all, that doesn't preclude us from approving it if we decide to.
It's more than a fifty percent variance, but again, in context, we've had situations where we've granted ninety percent variances on sheds because of property and other things like that. So again, I agree with you, Karen.
Anyone else have any comments or disagree?
I agree with that.
Okay. Number four, will the granting of the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? He says, I do not believe it will have an adverse effect in any way regarding the physical and/or environmental conditions in our community because it will be fabricated with the same materials as the house and will match the house exterior facade. I don't see any problems.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, number five is the alleged difficulty self-created. He says, my opinion is that the difficulty is not self-created because the existing landscape sloped ground is the same in the backyard as when I bought the house property, comparing with the proposed storage shed area location. See enclosed pictures, which is pretty level. Well, technically it is because as Rachel said, you know, there are ways to, to put it in the backyard. But perhaps when he moved in, he didn't need a shed. I don't know. You know, who knows?
Like, like most variances, this is self-created.
Yeah. So. Anybody have any other comments?
I'll make a motion to request counsel to prepare a decision consistent with our discussions this evening to be voted on at the next meeting.
Second that motion pending the approval of the.
We can't pen the approval.
Okay, okay, okay.
Because it either, yeah.
I second Craig's motion.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to take a? Okay, Ed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So Kelly will draw up a favorable decision for him, draft decision.
I was, and I was typing and trying to get all, everybody's comments in, which is, I was like, no, yes. Dramatically shake my head so you knew what I was trying to say without stopping to unmute.
Okay, so we have nothing for this evening to have a motion. Oh, no, Craig has something to say.
So Kelly, Kelly, two thirty-nines, we've been around and about on two thirty-nines in my time on the board and we were, there was supposedly a I don't, I don't know if it was a directive or it was a procedure or a standard practice that they sent a two thirty-nine to the county on everything. And they were, no, wherever, literally.
At one time, yeah.
At one point, when I started, they were sending a two thirty-nine and we were like, why are we doing this, right? These properties are in the middle of nowhere, nowhere near anything that would trigger a two thirty-nine. So I'm looking at this one and going, why was it two thirty-nine sent on this one? Right? And, and so one of the things that from several meetings that I've been involved with, there is, you can actually, and maybe this is something I should take up with the building department, is that you can request a map of the parcels in your municipality that will trigger a two thirty-nine. And what we have to do is look it up and say, oh, it's red or yellow or whatever, and then you know you have to submit a two thirty-nine. And everything else you don't have to.
Well, the map is usually just a measurement of five hundred feet. But the problem, so I don't know if the building department was sending all of them or not, the time.
Yeah, they were at one time and the reason they said, when I asked, was because they would rather send it than have it. I found out later that it wasn't, you know, that it was needed and they didn't send it.
Yeah, I, I work really closely with the building department. I, I'm on the phone with them probably at least once a day. And that's why I try and include in my memos to this board a reasoning why, if it's something out of the ordinary, like for this, this project that you just had, compared to Coughlin, that was, didn't require one. This piece of property actually backs right up on Highland Lake State's HOA's open space, which is also considered recreation area, like passive recreation. And if you're within five hundred feet of a recreation area, other recreation area, it does have to get referred. And that's why this one had to get referred, but I talked to Maria or Jen to make sure, before I send you something, that this one was referred or this one didn't need to be referred. So that there's, so that if there was something that slipped through, thinking that it did. or this one didn't need to be referred, so that there's, so that it, there was something that slipped through, thinking that it didn't need to be referred to make sure it gets referred so that the board can act that you're following meeting. But that's why this one needed to go.
So even though it's open space dedicated to either the village of the town, probably the town, based on the age of that development, which, so it's owned by the town, um, it still has to be referred for county-wide approval?
Actually, this open space is owned by the HOA, but it does have to be, the the trigger is, I didn't write the exact language. Other recreation, yeah.
Okay.
And to cover that, in case, in case somebody looked at this one really as a controversial application or any application is a controversial application, we always try and err on the conservative side, and this one does back right up to that. And they're, so that's why for this one, but when it's something out of the ordinary, I do try and note why because sometimes I look at it and say, there is no reason that this particular property should get referred. And why slow everybody down or anything like that? So I try and look at it, and um, like I said, the building department's great. And when I say, shoot, this one does, it's like.
You're on top of it.
Out that afternoon, so they get it.
I'm good.
Impact him, you know.
Yeah, and something like this, it seems so silly.
We would have to vote on it next month, so it doesn't slow him down at all.
And it just happened to work out for Coughlin because um, like I said, that's, that's a very unique uh situation that you probably won't see again, but just seemed to work out for him. And he, he must have found a lucky penny today or something, so good for him.
So on that note, and since I took extra time for no good reason, I apologize, and I will make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Rachel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Everybody, have a good night.
Yes, you too.
Good night, everybody.
Take care, guys.